Okay folks, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the last meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Education in this room. We're gonna be, we're gonna be moving next month to our new minitorium. It'll be ready for us to go. So I'd like to welcome each of you here. The first thing that we're gonna do, if you'll stand, we're gonna have the colors presented tonight by the Owen High School Junior ROTC Program. With today being the National Day of Prayer, if you wouldn't mind, please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you and please be seated.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In light of the fact that some, a lady was sitting in a chair that fell apart right down here, I am really glad we're moving to a new facility.[303.83][303.83](Laughter).
As someone said one time, low bid sometimes.[312.83][312.83](Laughter). Alright, so the first thing we're gonna do is make the approval for the agenda. A couple of things that we would like to move around on the agenda tonight before we approve it. We are going to pull the Director of Communications position off of the Personnel Report and vote on it separately under the Action Agenda. And we are going to be moving also from the Consent Agenda, the Approval of 2014 Enrollment and Facility Needs Report, and Approval of the Implementation of the Five-Year Facilities Plan, and the Approval to Design and Finance a New INCA Intermediate School. All those things will be moved to the Action Agenda. And we're also going to move towards the back, the Board Directive, we're gonna move that to right after Public Comments. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Certainly.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Superintendent's Comments.
Good evening, everyone. U.S. News and World Report released their National High School Rankings last week, and I'm very proud to recognize three of our high schools, A.C. Reynolds, Owen, and INCA High School, for their rankings that placed all three in the Top 20 Ranked Schools in North Carolina. You may recall that Reynolds actually cracked the top 10 in 1213. I think they were actually, see Ms. Sellers back there, she's got the big five up, number five. She tried to sneak a four in, but it went to five. They're number 12. We're proud, we're proud of all of our high schools. These rankings were very heavily based on college readiness criteria, certainly student performance on our Advanced Placement Testing, as well as our End-of-Course Exam. So again, congratulations to our three high schools. Academics and quality instruction within all of our classrooms, as they should be, they are always given the highest of priorities. And earlier this afternoon, Ms. Swanger and her curriculum team put together just an excellent work session on standards within that curriculum across Buncombe County. We had just some incredible teacher leaders, I think, how many in total did we have that were, fifteen on a panel that talked to the Board regarding what's taking place in the classrooms, some of the truths, some of the fallacies regarding Common Core, some of the truths, some of the fallacies regarding the state's standards across the entire curriculum, just did an outstanding job. So thank you, I know that that was a lot of effort that was placed into that work session. Again, while we're very proud of that high academic quality in Buncombe County schools, we also recognize the value of the many extracurricular programs. In fact, I see one of those outstanding programs sitting right in front of me. In fact, I think I can actually count maybe three outstanding extracurricular programs. You've heard me say this before, and I truly believe this, that those extracurricular programs, whether it be our FFA program, whether it be our Project Lead the Way Robotics Team, whether it be our band, our chorus, or our athletics program, they are truly one of the best dropout prevention efforts that we have in our school system. Regarding athletics, for example, we have over 3,000 students, the high school, middle school level, that participate in high school organized athletics. And the majority of those coaches that are out there working with those student athletes, just like the majority of our sponsors, working with our clubs and organization, during the daytime, they're in those classrooms teaching academic skills. Both of them teach life skills, but they just teach them in a little different environment, one during the day, one after school. I want to publicly recognize Mr. David Ball, and I see some Irwin students and Irwin administrators here. Mr. David Ball, longtime educator, athletic director at Irwin High School, was recognized as the North Carolina Athletic Director of the Year. So he received an award in front of about a thousand educators earlier today, and again, I want to publicly say how proud we are of David and just what he's meant to that school community at Irwin. I've been asked, Board members, by our six high school principals, they've asked that I approach you regarding extending the scheduling of the community information events. If you recall, we put in our Regulation 5030, which recognized the distribution of information. We placed within that regulation a Community Information Night that would be held in all six districts. In fact, tonight, the INCA district is, they have their community information program going on as we speak. I see several INCA parents that probably came from that, and I know Mr. Spivey is there in attendance. As I reported to you last spring, Irwin High School actually became the pilot for that information event. Wonderful job. We had over thirty community organizations that represented, and they were both religious and nonreligious affiliated representatives. I really believe that a primary reason for that being so successful at Irwin was the leadership of our Communications Department, especially our Communications Director. So what I've heard from our high school principals is they would like the opportunity to hold that information night within the first four weeks of the new school year. I've asked them to give me specific dates, and I will bring those to you in June. I think their rationale is that if we have our, a full Communications Department staff, they'll start working on that this summer. I do have a faith-based Leadership Council, we met last week, and I talked that over with that particular group, and they certainly want to be strongly involved as we plan for those information events to happen across the entire county. So I see a few high school principals there, Mr. Evans, Ms. Sellers, Ms. Roney, anything you would like to add to that, to the Board?
I would just say thank you for the opportunity to have that in the fall. With all the craziness happening in high schools right now, I can speak from that myself, with athletics and concerts and so forth going on, I also think that we would have much better attendance if we grouped it with an open house in the fall, back to school, or whatever we want to call it. I think it'd be much better attended, I think we'd have a better opportunity to have community organizations there. So I appreciate the opportunity to have the fall open right now. Right now is just a really tough time. Thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Roney, I think you've actually, you're gonna tie in that event with your, through your school improvement team, and tie in with some goals for the school, is that correct?
Yes, Dr. Baldwin, we have talked as a Robertson District, and we're going to do a collective school improvement team goal to add to our school improvement plan that would include the community event that we would hold each year.
Again, that's my proposal to you, the Board, and we would bring those dates to you at the June meeting, so you would have them. And I think it really does make sense, and plus, hopefully, we'll be able to provide a lot more support to our high school principals. The recent court decision that many of you may be aware of, to halt the legislative requirement to offer 25% of teachers in each of the 115 school systems, a four-year contract, there are salary increments that come along with that particular contract. Both Guilford and Durham County were involved in a lawsuit, the judge has halted that process, but it's added to the uncertainty for us in this school system because there is potential that that particular lawsuit can apply to all 115 school systems. We just don't yet know. I spoke with our State Board of Education representative a little bit earlier this afternoon, and again, they've not received any information, and it's still uncertain. The other possibility is the General Assembly begins the short session, I think that's May 14th, there's always that possibility that they themselves may adjust that particular piece of legislation, we just don't know. However, the law is the law, and Mrs. Lopez has worked very diligently with a team of teacher leaders representing all six of our districts. We just recently had a meeting, and so we have progressed on to identifying the criteria that we will use, but our intent is not to bring you any list of names until, to be quite honest with you, the last possible moment because of this uncertainty. Ms. Lopez, could you, would you mind talking to us about that particular criteria that our committee has determined?
Yes, sir, Dr. Baldwin and Board members. The committee, as you will recall, the committee came before you at the March Board Meeting, I believe it was, and told you about the work that they had been doing, and how they had been out in the schools. That committee, I think, has met six times, several times, to get together and hash out the law, and also to survey the teachers, and ask the teachers what criteria that they would want to see. So the committee this past week met, and where they are, is that first, all teachers who, to be considered, must have three consecutive years of teaching, and that is a requirement of the law. Also, to be considered, teachers must have received ratings of at least proficient or at standard on their evaluation instruments for the past two school years. The committee added another layer, and that is, to be considered, teachers must not have been subject to disciplinary actions that would include a suspension from employment or an official reprimand that is placed into their central office personnel file. Finally, the committee is going to take people who meet all of that criteria and subject those folks to, subject those names to a lottery system, or random selection, and select the 25% in that matter. And so that was, that was the criteria decided upon by the committee. So then, in June, at one of the June Board Meetings, we will come with the final list of names, of folks who meet, using that criteria have been selected.
Any questions?
What are the numbers, do you have the numbers yet, in terms of?
It'll be approximately 350, I think, 350 teachers who would be selected, unless there's a change in the definition of teacher.
Out of how, do you know yet how many are left after you apply that criteria?
It's approximately 1,400. Well, I'm sorry, it's 1,400 who meet the three years. And then, once you take out the folks who do not meet proficient or at standard, and I don't have that number with me, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. I will be bringing a recommendation for a new principal of our Discovery Academy for the Board tonight, and one of the first duties that that principal will have is he will burn up telephone lines, because he will be on the telephone contacting a hundred of our applicants to give them the good news that they, through using our ratings with our very stringent STEM rubric, that they have been selected for admission into the incoming ninth grade class. The names of the additional students that applied will be sent to UNC Greensboro and a department there called SERVE, and again, using that criteria, they will statistically, through, I guess the best way to describe that is a lottery, statistical lottery method, to identify their particular rank on the waiting list. So we're very excited about that. The next duty of that particular principal will be to start interviews for staff members, and so, very exciting time, and as Chairman Reinhardt said, we will be in the new minitorium for our June Board Session, so we're looking, looking forward to that. I want a reference to both the Board and the public to, I'd like to invite you to go to our system website and look at the individual district calendars. There are so many end-of-year activities taking place, so many clubs, organizations, performances that are going to happen over May before we get into the June testing session. And Ms. Swanger, I know the North Buncombe District, can you share with us, I understand they had just a very exciting, successful night with?
They did, something a bit unusual. They had a district chorus event at their school Tuesday night. Tuesday night was a busy night, we had teachers celebrating reading in this building, I watched this young man at the spelling bee, and the North Buncombe Chorus, all happening Tuesday night. Every school, elementary, intermediate, middle, and high, participated in this choral event. They all had their own mini concerts, and then they all sang one selection together. So what a tribute to their district, and they, it was standing room only, I understand. Today, I had the pleasure of attending Special Olympics, and Borgy would have been so proud of our student athletes, and also our student volunteers. What a connection that those children make with the students who were athletes today. So fabulous day. Go out and visit the school events this month.
So many wonderful opportunities happening. Finally, I want to just take the liberty of sharing a really exciting professional experience. Next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, if you need to reach me, it will be long distance, I will be in Miami, Florida, and though I will not be soaking up the sun, I assure you, I'm gonna be part of Southern Association Accreditation Team. Miami Dade, the Miami Dade School System is actually the fourth largest in the entire country. This will be the largest undertaking by the Southern Association to certify an entire school system, so really looking forward to that. They have a very successful urban system, and we're gonna be visiting a number of those schools and meeting with central office staff, so excited about the possibilities of the information, the ideas, and innovations that I'm gonna be able to bring back that hopefully will, will be able to apply to make our school system even better. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my comments.
Very good, thank you, Dr. Baldwin.
Mr. Rhodes, do we have any employees to recognize tonight?
Good evening, Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the Board. We have one employee tonight for recognition. I was not able to catch up with her and get a little bit about her, but hopefully she's here. Jennifer Darrencher is a kindergarten teacher at Johnston Elementary and is celebrating ten years with the system, so Jennifer, if you're here, come on forward. She's not here. So we have two pieces of good news for the evening. The first is Laura DeGroot. Laura is a student at A.C. Reynolds High School, working on her Girl Scout Gold Award. She has been working with Bell Elementary students in order to increase their level of exercise and help them eat healthier to avoid the risk of becoming obese as an adult. So Laura, if you would, please tell us a little bit about your project.
Hi, my name is Laura DeGroot, and I'm working on my Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the highest honor award that a Girl Scout can earn. Being passed around, you should be getting pictures from the fitness video that I created, and a, some flyers that the students have created. Also, there is a DVD of my fitness video that you'll be getting later. Obesity is, obesity causes a lot of problems throughout a human's lifetime. Studies have shown that 30% of adults who are categorized as obesity, as obese, first developed weight problems in childhood. If you can reduce 30% of obese, then why sit there and do nothing? Eight years ago, I was told I was at risk of being obese. At age of nine, I started to gain weight by eating and not doing enough movement. In the fourth grade, I weighed 160 pounds. I was putting so much stress and pressure on my bones and lungs that I was having a hard time starting to move. In the seventh grade, I was diagnosed with exercise-induced asthma, and I wanted to do something. I was bullied about my weight and always felt obligated to start a diet, but I loved food. In seventh grade, I joined the swim club at Cane Creek Middle School. It was very hard on my lungs to even hold my breath for just five seconds, but I managed to work on it. I have now swam for six years, but I still have asthma, and I am now in a healthy weight, and I am active. With my research of childhood obesity, I found that the federal recommendations for children is that they need to accumulate at least sixty minutes of moderate physical activity most days of the week. That means that at least the number of days that they should be exercising is five days. My project was working with Bell Elementary, which has PE only one day a week. Before starting my project, I sent out a survey to the students and asked if they exercised at home. Only 20% of the children that were surveyed do some kind of exercise that actually will benefit them. Bell Elementary has a health fair every year in October, Childhood Obesity Awareness Month. The school nurses, including Beth Barber, take the student's BMI. A BMI is a student's Body Max Index that tells the child if they're at risk of being overweight, obese, or underweight. Beth Barber told me that they send out a letter to the parents of the students that are at risk of being overweight, or obese, which is 95th percentile and up. She asked the parents if they are interested in services for the child, which they'll take the child individually and make a game plan on monitoring their weight. With students of Bell Elementary and Girl Scouts, I created four fitness videos that the children, that work out to during class. These videos are played during the morning or afternoon in the classroom, not during PE, since they're already getting some kind of activity during that period. The videos have a duration of five minutes, and the students tell me that they're really fun. After these, after the students and teachers used the videos for two weeks, I sent out a survey to the teachers, and they all agreed that they see an improvement in the children's attentiveness and abstinent, absence, even with one class having type B influenza, and they are still doing the workouts, and they are fighting the virus faster. The students do not learn that they have to exercise to become healthy. They were taught about what foods they should eat as well. Ms. Pajazza's third grade class drew flyers of healthy foods. The flyers were placed around the school at Bell Elementary, so that other students can see what foods are healthy. Since the colors of red and yellow signify hunger, a lot of kids drew fruits and vegetables, like strawberries and bananas. Since physical education has been reduced in elementary schools because of the increase in testing, I have thought about how you can keep kids studying for the test and get any amount of exercises in elementary schools. I would like to see each elementary school in Buncombe County have the option of using the fitness videos in the morning during their announcements, or having the video available to each teacher to use during the day when it is convenient, and to have the posters placed around the schools to help the students think about healthy eating. Of course, using the videos in October during Childhood Obesity Awareness Month is great, but the ideal solution would be use it throughout the school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The second presentation will be from our CTE Director, Kristy Cheek, and she's gonna tell us about some of the students and their success in competitions.
So I had to get my reading glasses out, I hope I don't have to read, use them, but I am getting old. So, good evening, Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the Board. It gives me great pleasure to see all these students out there, and their advisors, and their principals, and their parents, because it takes a village to get all this stuff done. So I just want to thank everyone, but this year, numerous CTE students competed at the district, state, and now we're going to nationals, so that's even great. And, you know, they can compete as a team or individually, but what CTSOs do is it helps us reinforce those 21st century skills that businesses tell us that we need every day, such as teamwork, critical thinking, working together, and I tell you, these students know how to do it and do it well. So tonight, I'm gonna recognize students, and their advisors, and their principals, and I'd like you to form a line up there, and we're gonna clap for everybody at the end, because as you see, there's a lot of students here, and if you're a parent, when your student, when your child's name is called, would you please stand, because they can't do it without you, and we can't do it without you too. We're gonna start with Reynolds High School, and I've adopted Keaton as my second son, so Keaton Bishop Marks. So Keaton, if you'll go, stand over there, Ms. Baldwin, you, since you're the Reynolds District, we're gonna let Keaton go way over there with you, okay? And Keaton placed first in 3D Design at the State TSA Conference, and his teacher is Taylor Baldwin, and Taylor can't be with us. Baldwin, and Taylor can't be with us tonight, so Ms. Sellers is there helping us out. And Keaton will represent Reynolds High School and Buncombe County at the National TSA Conference in Washington DC in June. And Keaton's parents are here also. And at the state conference too, Taylor Baldwin received the Young Educator of the Year for the TSA organization. So we're very proud of them. And also from Reynolds High are Madison Tambini, I hope that was correct, and Kayla Eckstein, and they placed third in Team Decision Making, Marketing Communications at the DECA State Conference in March. And they will represent A.C. Reynolds High School at the National DECA Conference in Atlanta this weekend. And Cedric Alexander, come on up, is their advisor, and we're very, very excited, and I actually got to see them on stage when their award. It's very, very exciting. So here's our Reynolds group, and we're very proud of all of them. And now we're going to go to Irwin High School, and so Dr. Brown will accompany all of his students up. Now, these first group of students are very dedicated, as they gave up part of their spring break to go compete. So you know that they're dedicated souls. And they're going to represent Irwin High School from FCC LA in San Antonio, Texas in July, and Dr. Brown wants to go because he's never been to the Alamo. So, so our FCC LA winners in Chapter in Review are Carly McLamb, Molly Kerr and Jessica Griffin. For Chapter Service Portfolio, Ty Worley, Tucker Worley and Josh Weaver. You can stand with Mr. Bryant. For Chapter Service Display, Caitlin Edmonds, Jordan McCannish. For Job Interview, Casey McCannish. And for Illustrated Talk, Charity Burke, Alexis Thomas and Hope Cornet. Now, their advisors are Lacey Davis and Katie Grogan. And here's another thing you're going to see, several of these students pull double duty and do FFA as well. So, let me tell you about the FFA winners, which Michael Joe Holt is here representing, so you can come on up too. And for the Senior Livestock Evaluation Team, which placed third at the state, Ty Worley, Tucker Worley, Casey McCannish and Jordan McCannish. So they pulled a double duty, they're two-ers. So then, from Owen High, and our Owen High group are competing right now, okay? So they're not with us, but they still get their names called because we're very proud of our Owen High group. Their advisor is Tim Paceauer, and they are competing and land judging. Now, that is a huge, huge event. John Nix, Jesse Door, Brandon Collins and Tyler Paceauer. So, we're very, is somebody here from Owen? No, they're competing, so anyway. And next up is our Valley Springs Middle School Group, who they competed also at the TSA State Competition, and their robotics team, where it's the highest scoring middle school team in the state, and they will be with Keaton going to Washington DC in June. And they are made up of, Mr. Birchfield, you can come join them, Woods Burton, Benjamin Robertson, Colton Cooley and Ryan Scott. And Chris Rhodes is their advisor. And then we have another dedicated soul group there that went to a competition during spring break also. And this is the North Buncombe Middle School Parley Pro Team, and they finished first in the state. And their members are Caleb Gillespie, Charlie Burlison, Ross Buckner, Jared Holcomb and Caleb Briggs and Josh McKinney. Now, I tell you something about this middle school team, they know Parley Pro very well, so if y'all get out of line, they know how to put you back in line, all right? So I want to just thank everyone, their sponsors, their advisors, the principals, their parents, everyone, and what an outstanding job they do. I'm very proud of these students. I will tell you, I don't know if she's out there or in the overflow room, but Emily Sutton Desio was one of my students that I taught that actually went to competition with me in DECA, and, you know, I know it's a rewarding experience for these students and I'm very, very proud to be a part with y'all. So, thank you very much. Let's give them all a great round of applause. So, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I left one, two people out, sorry. Justin Gillespie and Flake Brantley, who is the middle school advisor, so Mr. Gillespie, you need to have your picture made, come on. Can't get out of it, my fault. So again, thank you for your time. You don't realize how much time these teachers give up out of their weekends, their nights, their whole year to help these students out. So we certainly do appreciate that. We've got to get a picture, Justin, sorry. You know, for some reason, people like pictures. Anyway, thank you very, very much. Y'all have a great, great time at Nationals. So my next small presentation, this past weekend, we're very excited to partner with the Asheville Home Builders Association, and I'm going to ask Caroline Sutton to come up. If you have any time, go look at the playhouses that our students built. They are up in the top parking lot, and they're six by eight foot playhouses that are drafting students, designed, our carpentry students built, and our interior design students decorated inside. Wild West was the theme, and I tell you, my picture was up in the jail. I do not know why, but so be it. This weekend, at the Home Builders Show, all of the playhouses were raffled off. We sold over 1,000 tickets at $5 each, so $5,000 will be coming back to CTE, which I'm very excited about. And Caroline is here to present the winners of this, so I'm going to ask the principals, if you are here or the CDC, anybody representing your schools, if you'll come up. And, you're going to present?
I do.
Okay, so there's two awards given at the Asheville Home Builders Association, and the first one is the fan favorite, and fans get to vote on the award, on the best playhouse. And this year, Owen High School won that award again. This is their second year, two years in a row, and their theme this year was Toy Story. And so they get money. And if anybody, it is such a really cute house, very, very good job. And then, the industry professionals actually go around and judge all the houses and really look at the work that the students did, and that's called Best in Show. And this year's Best in Show goes to Reynolds High School. So we're very excited for them. I know, look, Keaton, you're excited too. I just have to thank our maintenance department and Sean Burlison for helping us move these playhouses. They are very big and very heavy, but we certainly appreciate, this really does give our students hands-on working, and I certainly appreciate everybody's help and assistance in our partnership with the Asheville Home Builders Association. Now, students, I have been told that you have homework and you need to leave, so you can be excused now.
Thank you.
Folks, while everyone's stepping out, if you're here and would like to make public comment, if you'll go over to your right, there's a sign-up sheet for public comment. You're more than welcome to do that if you so desire. All right, next on the agenda is our curriculum feature, Ms. Swanger.
Chairman Reinhardt, members of the board, Superintendent Baldwin, tonight it's all about career and college readiness. And you're going to hear about a program at TC Robertson High School in partnership with AB Tech, and I would like Ms. Amy Roney to come up and introduce her special guest, and I hope you enjoy the presentation.
Good evening Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin and members of the board. I'm excited to share with you this evening what I hope is to be some good news for you. This year, TC Robertson has piloted in partnership with AB Tech Community College, a college readiness center, which is housed on the campus of TC Robertson High School. The name of the specific course that our students actually sign up for is called College Readiness, and is available three periods per day to our 11th and 12th grade students. And next year, we hope it will be available to also our 10th grade students. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Mike Dempsey, Director of Educational Partnerships from AB Tech, and our instructor, Mr. J.D. Herman from AB Tech, to share more with you about our partnership.
Thank you so much, Ms. Roney, and it's always good to speak to y'all. Greetings from AB Tech. I'm convinced that what we're about to show you is kind of, along with the STEM School, is the next big step in our partnership. It is called the College Readiness Center, and I'll get our presentation going here right now, tell you a little bit more about it. It is a facility, as Ms. Roney stated, located at TC Robertson High School, so students can come into this room and refresh their academic skills in English and math. It is staffed by Mr. J.D. Herman, who I'm very, very honored to be associated with, who is our facilitator at Robertson. Students are, how this works is, we pre-test students in the AccuPlacer, which is AB Tech's placement examination. Then we tutor them with a product made by Pearson Education called My Foundations Lab, which hones in on their specific skills deficiencies. And then we post-test them in the AccuPlacer again to see how much they have grown in English and math. Also, this eliminates non-credit, can eliminate, non-credit bearing college courses at AB Tech that lead up to the, what we call gateway courses that lead to degrees in college. Participants do receive one high school credit, and Mr. Herman is a certified teacher with the state of North Carolina. Funded through an anonymous donation to our AB Tech's foundation, currently, again, we've got two in Operation, one at Asheville High School, one at Robertson High School, and we are now, I met with our grant writer today, we're seeking funding, we want to do this long-term, we want to do it in all of your schools if possible. I did check with the North Carolina Community College System, and Dr. Sharon Morrissey, who is the Chief Academic Officer of the Community College System, did confirm that this is the only such program in the state. So again, another notch in our caps, another feather in our caps between Buncombe County Schools and AB Tech. Today, 85 students have enrolled in the program. We've seen enrollment grow, it's 55 students this spring term. The students collectively last semester bypassed 85 college, non-credit bearing college classes, and that's a savings in tuition, access fees, textbooks, et cetera, of about $9,000 to the community. I expect that number to go up as we have more students in the center and more, and we get better, you know, get better at what we're doing. And we see students bypass more non-credit bearing classes. The savings is significant if the student does well in the class, and that's really, in my opinion, the biggest point, saving families money. Also, we found out, counterintuitively possibly, that the optimal student has about a 3 to a 3.5 GPA, and just hasn't tested well on ACT, SAT, PLAN, et cetera. So, these are good students. I want to take a few moments of your time to show you a video that we produced this week, tell you a little bit more about this. And just put the final touches on it today, so I hope it doesn't go kaplooey on me. Let's see what happens.
The purpose of the College Readiness Center is to allow students to eliminate or reduce the college prep coursework that they would have to take once they enroll at AB Tech.
It's to prepare students for college. These are for students who need a leg up. They are highly motivated students, and they want to go to college, but they just need a little assistance so they can be successful.
My experience in the College Readiness Center has been very informative and very much of a growth experience mentally and intellectually, because I'm more skilled in more math operations, because that's where I'm trying to improve, is in arithmetic and algebra. So that's where I've seen the most improvement, obviously, but it's helped me, you know, further my math education and grow more in math.
I knocked out lots of credit hours of classes that I was going to have to take. I think it ranged up to thousands of dollars I was going to save. It was going to take me a year to get to where I was actually going to be able to focus on what I truly needed in college.
We took the AccuPlacer. I didn't do too well on it the first time, and by the second time, you know, I did my tutorials, and it really helped me, and then I took the SAT. And turns out, the tutorials are actually helping on the SAT as well. I scored a lot higher than I did my first time, so, and I noticed a lot of things that, you know, were on the tutorials that were also on the SAT. So it really helped me out, and I'm glad that I ended up taking the course.
I definitely progressed in mathematics and the algebra part. It definitely helped me in, because I've taken many mathematics classes before, but this kind of went step by step and kind of showed you how to do it, and it's definitely going to help me, because I eliminated some of my math classes that I'm going to have to take at AB Tech, so.
I've been doing writing and math, and with writing, I brought up some stuff that I haven't, you know, gone over since like ninth grade, and I think it helped me with like, I mean, it did help me with writing again and, you know, how things are supposed to be structured, and I guess that's pretty important when going to college, because you have to write a lot of papers.
You kind of have, get that sense of independence, basically, because your work, you're basically doing your work, and it's basically on how much you finish it, how much work ethic you put into it. So it gives you a form of independence, and, you know, you're doing your work on your own, the teacher's not babysitting you kind of thing. So that's where you really have to get that, oh, I got to get my work done, or I'm not going to get a good grade in this class. That's kind of where it helps you, because it's your responsibility.
It's really specific to my needs and what I needed to learn, so I felt the class was very personal.
I would recommend it to the people who do not test well, because since I don't, it helps you understand and look at somewhat what questions are and how you need to think a little bit more, and then it helps you on what you should be looking at. And it definitely helped me with my ACT scores, and so I think it would definitely help other people if they're struggling.
I would definitely recommend this class to a friend, but a friend who's very self-motivated, and they, you know, they really want to improve in intellectually and math or in any other subjects, because this class really does help with that.
I have a lot of friends who don't think they're going to college, or don't know if they are, or don't know how they're going to get there. And I would recommend this class, because it helps you know how to get there, it helps you get there, and once you plan on getting there, it helps you know what you got to do and what you need to do.
It's very much student-centered and student-driven, so they go at their own pace, so the high flyers can fly high, and people who need extra one-on-one help, I can attend to that and respond to that in a meaningful way.
Pretty good opportunity. I suggest everyone should be in this class.
And now I'd like to turn over the microphone to J.D. Herman to tell you about his experience.
Dr. Dempsey mentioned that I was a certified teacher in North Carolina, and to expand on that, I taught high school math in Charlotte and Pittsboro for seven years. And in that experience, I found, through my own practices and my colleagues' practices, that the hardest thing to do was to differentiate inside of the classroom to reach a truly diverse set of needs. In fact, I would go so far as to say only the most, the highest achieving teachers were able to do that on a level that I would describe as enough. Toward the end of those seven years, I thought, man, if there was a tool that could assist teachers who really want to do this effectively, and when I, my wife and I moved to Asheville- And when I, my wife and I moved to Asheville and I applied for this position, I heard that there was a tool that was associated with it, Pearson Education's My Foundations Lab. And at first, I wasn't sure how well it would work, and I was astounded at how targeted the instruction is in this program. I am truly a facilitator. I help students who are struggling with the program, who don't quite get something after it's presented in the program. And that makes this job incredibly rewarding. So, we're accomplishing a lot of great things. I think that there is incredible potential for growth for this program, not just within the schools in which it already exists, but also within the county as a whole. And I think if you look at the numbers, you will find that as well. So, thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I have just one or two, and you may have said, I may have missed you if I did, I apologize. The credit, is this a one semester, is this a year-long course? And two, is it 9th graders only, 9th through 12th, 11th and 12th, who's participating?
Right now, it's 10th and 11th, excuse me, 11th and 12th graders. It's one high school credit, and it's a semester-long, is that it?
Semester-long course?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
No college credit for this, except for, you know, obviously bypassing the courses.
Right.
I don't know if there's a connection with the remediation classes that you offer, and I just wonder if you could tell us what the remediation rate is at AB Tech?
For high school graduates who come to us, it's about 55%.
That mean, you mean 55% of the students have to have-
That means they would take one or more, typically.
Do you expect this to be, I don't know if this is related to that or not, but do you expect it to help with that remediation rate?
Oh, absolutely. That is, that's the main purpose of this, absolutely.
Do you have that remediation rate broken down by, like, students from Buncombe County? How many have to be remediated, or what percentage?
I do have that data, I don't have it with me.
Yeah, I understand.
And just one more thing I wanted to add, we've accomplished a lot as a group, but there are students who've participated in the College Readiness Center, some of whom were in that video, who have eliminated up to 16 credit hours. Two students have done that. One's eliminated 13, a few more have eliminated 11. And we're already looking at a full semester's worth of coursework that would cost the same amount of money that, you know, courses that would count toward a degree would cost. But, you know, spending time and money on these college prep courses can reduce students' chances. Of course, they need them, but if we can get that done in high school, we really do feel like the outcomes for these students are drastically changed. And of course, this is the first year of the program, so we haven't seen that yet. But, when you just look at the amount of coursework that they've been able to pass over, and in a legitimate, meaningful way, that will actually help them in the courses that they will take as soon as they get there.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, Mr. Rhodes, who do we have first tonight for public comment?
First is Joe Belcher.
I'd like to remind everyone that, you go ahead, Mr. Belcher. Remind everyone that you'll have three minutes, and I am the official timer.
I won't be long, I'm Joe Belcher, I'm here as a parent and also as local commissioner, one of your county commissioners. First thing I want to do, before I forget, I want to thank all of you for your service. I appreciate that very much, and what you do for our community. And also Chairman Reinhardt mentioned the Day of Prayer today, and I unfortunately missed the TC Robertson event today, because I was at downtown at the National Day of Prayer. And a lot of different people were praying for certain parts of our community. And you were represented very effectively today by Ms. Baldwin, was there praying for the students and for the teachers and for the work that you do here. And I want to thank her for being there today also. And shout out to Ms. Kristy Cheeks, and we'll be with her tomorrow in the Advanced Manufacturing Pipeline Meeting. I'm pretty excited about that, we have been working on to try to provide a, some of our great students with a good job when they get out. And there's a great need in the advanced manufacturing community now, and so I wanted to give you that bit of good news, and we're real excited about it, it's in its infancy, and looking forward to that. But, again, I appreciate what you do tonight. I think you'll be discussing the INCA Intermediate School, and I'm just here to tell you how much it is needed in the community and how much it is supported in the community. And just such a great positive buzz out there about it, and I certainly hope that you'll be able to support it this evening. A lot of people in the community have worked very hard over many, many years, expressing a need for that. And so, my grandson will get an opportunity to attend that, and so I'm pretty excited about that. So, I would appreciate your support of that this evening. And again, thank you all for what you do, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Belcher.
Next is Emma Wood.
Hey, guys. How's it going? Okay, that's cool. Okay, I'm Emma, I'm 15, and I'm in 9th grade at INCA High School. And I'm not one for public speaking, just gonna put that out there, but I thought it was important to speak about the intermediate school, because I went to INCA Middle School a year ago. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I got to high school, and the first thing I thought was, oh, my gosh, I can actually breathe in the hallways. You have no idea. Like, trying to cram a bunch of kids down a hallway that's really no bigger than this. And, you know, we're all trying to get to class, and we're stepping on each other's toes, and we're pushing each other into lockers, and, you know, we're screaming and fighting, and like, I know that sounds like dramatic, but I'm being serious. Like, that's ridiculous. Like, I was scared to get to the next class, because I'm like, I don't know if I'm going to survive this. You know, like, we had like six, seven lunch periods, and it started at 10:30, and it went all the way to 1 o'clock. Like, I don't want to eat at 10:30, and I don't want to eat at 1 o'clock. Like, I mean, but I think, most of all, I just wanted to say thank you for all the parents and the people who are considering building this intermediate school, because we really need this. And I won't be one who's attending it, but, I mean, I know future generations who are going to be attending it, and, I mean, we desperately need this school. I mean, seriously, I don't know what else to say about that. I mean, I babysit a lot, you know, and there are a lot of little kids, and I don't want little kids to have to go to a school environment like I did, because that's just like not a good school environment. Like, it's just not. So, thanks for considering this, and, you know, I and future generations are gonna thank you. So, that's it, that's all I got for you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Wood, thank you very much.
Next is Michelle Pace Wood.
You've got some big shoes to pull, Mr. Phil.
All right, I have my little timer, wait a minute now. Let's coordinate that, Bob.
All right, now.
Chairman. Thank you very much Board for letting me speak tonight. My name is Michelle Pace Wood, and I'm representing the group Equal Education for INCA. We've come before you several times. It's a 500-member parent and community group that have been working hard, as you know, for the new INCA Intermediate School. And we're asking you tonight that you fund the new school immediately, today, without delay. There's a lot of stories going around right now about this new school, and we've sent you a lot of data we'll hope you'll consider. So, I thought tonight we would tell you a story that keeps us up at night. The Liberty Road, let's say, we're gonna take a look at INCA District in 2016 and 17. The Liberty Road exit is well underway. As Rick Tipton said, we've moved up in the priority status, which wasn't a consideration in capacity numbers by Tim that we spoke to today. And then their developers have already said, oh, man, there's some new action out there. So, they're starting now to build multifamily residential units, which is gonna put a lot more people. And guess what? We have new water and sewer, because there's several groups out there that are wanting expansion. And then we've got some, you know, imaginary, let's say there's an imaginary charter school out there, and maybe there's not. They're not gonna take INCA students for some reason, because they're not required to. It's not district-specific. So, let's say no INCA students go there. Let's say just one or two. Or let's say it closes suddenly, like 8% of all charter schools do in America. Halfway through the school year, and all those students have to go to the only school available to them, INCA Middle. Or let's say it never opens, because there's a site problem. We thought we were gonna get one, but all of a sudden, we don't have one. And it doesn't open on a year that it's supposed to. If you don't fund this school tonight, the capacity levels for INCA will be, in the functional capacity, Hominy Valley 87%, Sand Hill 95%, Candler 100%, INCA Middle 101%, and Piska 123%. And they're gonna come to you as parents and say, where's our school? Well, it takes two years to build, and you're not gonna have the time for it. You're gonna spend taxpayer dollars in all the wrong places. It also means that we're gonna have possible cuts to our current programs, because we don't have the facilities. There's no room for new innovative programs like what TC was talking about tonight. Four overcrowded schools and no time to build. Board, it's time. Enough with the debate and inequity, enough with the delays, enough with the new studies, enough of pushing our capacity to levels that will disqualify us for new programs, enough of making our kids walk crowded hallways, take early lunches, enough with stalling tactics for imaginary future schools, enough of scaring and deceiving the parents of INCA with unproven allegations, cherry pick data, and media ambushes. Enough, enough.
Ms. Woods, thank you very much.
Please vote for it tonight, thank you.
Members of the board, Chairman, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I appreciate your service. My name is John Sutton. In addition to being a 1992 graduate of the INCA school system, I'm also a business owner in the community, and I'm also a parent. I have a 4th grader at Hominy Valley Elementary School, and a 6th grader at INCA Middle School, who incidentally eats lunch around 10:15 or 10:30 every morning. I'm not really here to talk about all the overcrowding, although it's apparent in my household every night. We did that last year. I'm here tonight to ask you to move forward on the project to construct the intermediary school for the INCA District. I think any delay will be seen as just continuing to kick the can down the street. As a business owner, as a taxpayer, I see that to be fiscally irresponsible to do that. The need is there, the need, the overcrowding issues have not changed, the data has not changed. I think when this issue came up, the estimated school cost was, in 2007 or 2008, was approximately $18 million. The latest figures I heard yesterday were $25 million. Any delay tonight will just further cost the taxpayers, cost the community more money, and hurt the students in the interim. I ask you to move forward, and appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Next is Emily Desio.
Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. I'm Emily Desio, I live in INCA Village, it's about, I guess, 500 feet from this new proposed site for our intermediate school. My daughter Etta is sitting there tapped into the Care Bears, because this is way too boring, and Care Bears is more. She will be enrolled at Hominy Valley Elementary School this fall, and I'm excited about Hominy Valley, and I'm excited about Dr. Jackson and the school there. And I thank you, and I really do thank you for your hard work to bring us to school. I feel in my heart that you're gonna do it. I'm asking you to stay the course and not delay any construction. It's really unfortunate that the misleading news story that aired last night cast a shadow on your hard work. You probably share my frustrations, considering the due diligence report, considering the findings that there were no contamination issues on the job site, on our school site, and considering that the separate parcel that might have issues is down gradient, which means downstream, down, below the school site. But I don't need to tell you that, y'all know that. Y'all paid for the money, you got the report, you've done your hard work. So, let's just stay the course, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Ms. Desio.
Next is David King.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Baldwin, board members, David King, County Commissioner, District 3, which serves the INCA Candler area. I'm here to echo what you're hearing tonight from the other commissioner and citizens of the INCA Candler District. We would like to urge you to move forward with the construction of the 56 Intermediate School. This is something I feel very good about as a commissioner, and the information that this board has provided to the county commission, and the research that went into researching this site, that we see no obvious reason not to move forward with it. And after speaking with someone, the director of WNC Alliance today, who was brought into this, who also said they saw no reason not to move forward with this school. So, I would strongly encourage you, and I thank you for the hard work that has gone into it. And feel very good about what you've done, and I feel like we will have a good school opening in August of 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Board members, thank you for allowing me a few minutes. My name's Dave Ogrin, I live at 3184 Sweden Creek Road in the South End. And I'm here on just a little bit of a precautionary thing. With part of the property being the old BASF or American INCA, who knows what they buried on that? Then we've got the landfill next door. Stuff slowly migrates out of the ground into the air, and that's why the EPA does all kinds of vapor intrusion testing. And if you've never been to a Brownfield Conference, the doctors and scientists keep bringing that up, and the dangers of it. And what really happens over time is this stuff affects children and pregnant women. Doesn't affect old guys, the rest of us. And this is, it's really terrible, but the way I look at it, this is kind of a form of population control. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ogrin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I was referred to a minute ago as the gloom and doom. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but our folks that has got up here and spoke, I think they've not done their due diligence to figure out what is actually out there on the BASF site. I know these folks, I appreciate what they do, and I'm in favor of the school, far as a school. I'm not in favor of the place, and I've said that before. This industrial site, I come to you months ago, it's not over a year ago. I brought you in the CD, I'm not giving you another one, I'm gonna give Chairman one you can share. On this CD, they are loads of information to contradict the good things that they're talking about on the school. Walter Curry, the attorney for AB Tech, the former attorney for here, and his partners, they all have this information. Mr. Curry was aware of it in 2000, October. And 2,150-some parts per billion of TCE on this property at AB Tech, in the OTM building of AB Tech's property. Now, this stuff is chloroform as well on this property, and it's at a high rate. They've not been enough information brought to this board. This Hominy Creek is not a clean whistle. It's got more contaminants in the history. Go and look at the history online, and you'll see what we're talking about. Just an accident just the other day, or other week or so. You look at what potential they are in the future, because they've already cleaned that pipe out. If there's another incident, it's gonna hit the creek a lot quicker. This property is joining the Hominy Creek, and you're gonna have a science lab and do all this modern stuff. I don't want a kid in the INCA District taking their big toe in Hominy Creek. I've lived there all my life, I know the history. This is in a flood, bill the soccer fields up, and that's a no-no in a flood plain. Now, if you want to understand it in a big picture, politicians are politicians. Now, if you want to understand it in a big picture, politicians are politicians. Statistics are something else when you've got the data. I would tell you, a former commissioner on the board of commissioners right now told a person, said, "Don't have to worry about it. It's already in the bag." Now, if he hadn't been talking to his fellow commissioner, do you think he would really say that? Now, here's the other thing. You've got two Brownfield sites on there. This Brownfield site that is proposed on fifty-six acres, this Brownfield site, the person over the Brownfield said it is heavily contaminated. That's not my words. Now, where is the creek at compared to this site? Where is it going? Is it going back up the stream? No, water goes down the stream, and it's going to go right through our property on this school.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, and I hope you look at your data.
I will, thank you.
And use it.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Rhodes, I missed that?
Andy Hallifield.
Hallifield.
Good evening, members of the board. I'll try and be brief, as articulate as possible and to the point. If we need a new school, I'm in favor of it. That being said, I want to point out, back in the fall, when I went to the advisory council meeting at Reynolds High School, I am a member of the Progressive Education Program Advisory Council, and at that meeting, we spent the whole time, or most of the time, talking about the safety of the students from the, as far as obesity, and outlawing Twinkies in lunchboxes for the safety of our students. Now, that's a pretty big step, in my opinion, for a school board to override the rights of parents. That being said, we're turning around six months later, and we're looking at the possibility of building a new school and investing twenty-five million dollars to put our students on a apparently heavily contaminated site. That's hypocritical, and that is teaching our students do what's right until it gets to the point where it's not beneficial to you. And I don't think that's a good thing to be teaching our students. Also, I want to make a plug for the Progressive Education Program. They are in need of five thousand dollars for a computer program that links all the PEP classrooms at Robertson High School with student data, so each teacher can keep up with everything pertaining to that student. And this is software that requires a license. Larry Weigle could give you the details about it, but I would personally appreciate it as a member of that advisory council if y'all would contact him and ask him to give you the details of that program that they need. We're fixing to spend millions of dollars on this STEM high school, which that's fine, but those students are going to succeed. They're going to make their way. PEP program, those students need all the help they can get because they're not capable of making their way. And I'm just asking for five thousand dollars for that program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hallifield.
George Trautbridge.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm just a taxpayer. I see some stuff that Lisa sends out, and I look at that, and I wonder, gee, maybe I'd have come over here and see what's going on. This is the first time I've ever walked in here. But I'm a taxpayer, and I hear the thing about the school, and I can talk a lot about, where's my money going? Well, we need the school. Well, is it because you got, the old school is crumbling? Is it because the headcount's coming in? What is it that you need it for? Is one of the factors in the decision to build a new school that you're going to save a lot of maintenance funds with the old school? I guess you're going to leave the old school. The maintenance costs will definitely go down there. So there might be some justification. Now, see, I'm a taxpayer, and I want something from my money, so if I'm going to invest, what, thirty million dollars, I like to see something coming back, and I should because the school that's being replaced, there should be some savings there. In addition to that, I want to look out five years or ten years and see what the headcount of the new school is going to be. It may be up next year or the year after. Is that going to be the trend? Is it going to be the trend in the district? Is it possible that school busing could handle some of the overages when they do occur, rather than building new schools? I'm kind of curious what alternatives have been considered, but I'm sure you've considered a lot of them. But when it comes to spending thirty million dollars, you know, I'm a little tight. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm really concerned about where my money's going. So I hope you're taking a really good look at that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Trautbridge. All right. So next, we have a board directive that comes from Ms. Baldwin. Ms. Baldwin, would you like to make that as a motion?
I move that we direct district officials to compare the K through eight model with the five-six intermediate model as a possible alternative in the INCA district.
Okay, that comes as a motion. Do we have a second? Hearing none, we'll move on to the action agenda. First, on the action agenda, we have pulled the position of the director of communications off of the remainder of the personnel report, which will stay on the consent agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the nominee, or I guess, or just the position for the director of communications?
A second?
All right. Is there a second? I have a second. Any comments?
I'd just like to say that I'll be voting no. I have nothing against the candidate. I just feel like that our money could be put to better use for teachers, and that the director and assistant director position could have been consolidated.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Next, on the action agenda, is budget amendment number six. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move acceptance of budget amendment number six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good. All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Can you give me a minute to pull it up, please? And since Ms. Frisbee's here, maybe you can give us a little synopsis so the crowd can hear.
We have a subnonsense. Subnonsense, or whatever.
The audience might want to know what we're voting on.
That has been provided to all the board members. So if you have any specific questions?
Well, she's pulling it up. I'll point out, I think it's interesting, the level of detail. A hundred and forty-nine dollars for school technology is one of the items. It's pretty specific on a pretty big budget.
Ms. Baldwin, do you have a specific question?
I was just double-checking. I think that I'm good. I didn't know if Ms. Frisbee had something she wanted to say.
I'm good.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Frisbee.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have, do I have a motion to approve the funding request for current expense capital appropriations and submission of the 2014 preliminary budget to the county commissioners?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any questions? Okay, hearing none?
I'm sorry, I did have something. Could you tell us how much the total is in this for the teacher supplement?
Are you talking about what's referenced in this document, or just overall?
For the, it's in the local current expense fund. That's what we're asking the commissioners to pay. I didn't know what portion of our total for the commissioners. I think it's fifty-three million dollars we're asking from them, and...
It's around thirteen million.
Okay.
But don't hold me to that. I need to research that and get back to you.
I think that's a question that should have been asked well in advance. I mean, I'm sure Ms. Frisbee would have been more than happy to have that information here.
Absolutely.
If she had known in advance.
I did send in some advanced questions that I didn't get answered.
And was that one of them?
No, but that's something that just got answered. I don't know if there's a problem.
Okay.
I will confirm that number, though.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm concerned, so what was the change from last year to this year? What was the total increase that we're asking the commissioners for?
Three million.
Three million eighty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Which changes, that's for us, but that number changes when you factor in the Asheville City.
That's for us. That is correct. It will be three point six million when you factor in the Asheville City school portion.
Right. And was there a reason that we chose, that the administration or budget committee chose not to increase the teacher supplement?
I was not directed to do so. I don't know. I mean...
I didn't know if that was discussed among, at the budget meetings?
Well, you know, as we talked about in our budget meeting that we had, this is very preliminary information. Really, we have to wait until the state finds out, you know, tells us, which we won't know until probably sometime, hopefully it'll be earlier this year, but sometime after the short session, which it'll take DPI time to take those numbers and disseminate all that information out.
Absolutely.
To the, but, you know, I think that, you know, our commissioners are, you know, working with the budget. They have to work within their budget, and I think they're going to try to work with us as best they can to, you know, give us all the funding that they can help us with. And we appreciate what the county commissioners do for us. You know, we're very fortunate here in Bonham County in that we have a relationship, a good working relationship with our county commissioners, and I would say that in ninety percent of the counties, that's not the case. And so I appreciate what the county commissioners do for us and that they're willing to work with us. And we do have a, we do have a good supplement. I would like to see it increased at some point in time. It's well above the state average, and we appreciate what they do for us.
Right. And this is just a prototype budget. It will change.
Yes, sir.
But we're required to submit a document by May fifteen.
And I was also, since Bob brought up the fact that the commissioners, he was very happy that they worked with us, yet we tried to schedule a meeting with them and we could not. Can you tell me why we haven't rescheduled, we didn't reschedule that meeting? It was supposed to occur in February.
Ms. Baldwin, we have talked about this numerous times. We tried to make that work, and we just have not been able to make it work. And with, it was not just with the county commissioners, it was with our state legislators also. And as you well know, Senator Nesbit was, we didn't know at the time, but he was very ill, so that was one reason some of the other ones couldn't make it, and so it just didn't work. And it's very difficult to try to make everyone's schedules work together.
Mr. Chair, can I call a question?
Can I?
Hold on just one second.
Anybody that calls a question needs to be recognized by the chair, just like you'd be recognized to speak on the main motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Franklin.
May I call the question?
You can call the question.
It requires a two-thirds majority vote.
And so if you are in favor of calling the question, will you please raise your hand?
That means you are ending debate.
Okay, so we have four.
That would not be two-thirds.
That would not be enough. So we'll keep, we'll keep asking questions.
Mr. Chair, can I just point one thing out, please?
Yes.
And this would be why I did not agree with calling with the question. But, and again, I say this all the time, I'm not a math person, but just looking at the things that we are requesting, it looks like, just me doing the math very quickly, we are actually looking at approximately one point three million dollars that are going to have direct, directly affect our teachers in some, in some way, up to and including a three percent pay increase that they're projecting, that will have to come out of local current expense funds, fund an increased retirement contribution rate with the local current expense fund, health insurance premiums. So while we did not specifically ask for an increase in supplement, I do think we need to point out that there is money in this request that's going to be directly affecting our teachers in a positive way.
Okay. Mr. Bryant, did you have?
Go ahead, Mr. Craig. You were...
That's okay.
You want to go, or you want me to?
After you.
Ms. Frisbee, can you help? I think I understand, and I think it would be good for the public to understand as it relates to state funding, local funding. The item that jumps out to me is the one million dollar, the last bullet point on page one of your memo, funding to cover net revenue gap to avoid having to utilize one month's operating balance and committed fund balance. Can you explain that? I think I understand it, but can you explain that and how we've, I think from a historical perspective, maybe Dr. Baldwin, you could add as well because you haven't been with us as long, but from a historical perspective, we've gotten to this point based on, and I'm not here to cast blame, I'm really not, but based on, for any number of reasons, a five or six-year period where we have continued to receive cuts in state funding, and we've, as a system, have tried to maintain keeping people employed and keeping the programs we currently have in place in place without cutting them.
That is correct.
Am I accurate in that, in what that, what the one million part of the three point oh-eight-three million dollar request that we're making? That's what that's doing. Is that correct?
That is correct, absolutely.
And Dr. Baldwin, is there anything?
I think that's an extremely significant part to point out, Mr. Bryant, because that one million dollars, if you've heard me say this both to the board and to the public, and you've heard me say that I've been Paul Revere for the last three years. If you recall, we projected three years ago, as a result of the budget crisis that came in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, the heavy dependence upon federal funding, which is no longer there. Federal funds come, and they quickly go. They have gone. Every dollar of that federal funding raised, the top stimulus stabilization funding, along with a significant reduction in state funding through those years. We all understand why. We projected three years ago, if you recall, presentation that was made to this board, and I went out, made the presentation to a number of advisory councils, we projected about a four point three million dollar loss. In other words, our policy, as each board member knows, requires us to maintain one month's operating expenses through our fund balance. At the time, that represented four point three million dollars, and three years ago, we were projected to take every single dollar. Therefore, we would have to, our attorneys would be called upon to assist us to determine now we basically are going to be violating our policy. That one million dollars is a significant decrease, and I think it's happened because of two reasons. Number one, I think we have, we have been very prudent in our decision-making, and number two, we have spread the hurt over multiple years. When you look at the loss in personnel, and you've seen, you've seen that slide, you will see every aspect of staffing and personnel, which equates for about eighty-five percent of our total operating budget, that there have been hits taken across the board. From tech assistants, tech associates, that first year, the twenty-four that I met with them, and on, have a job, you no longer have a position, but we will try to maintain you somewhere in a job, all the way through to a loss of some teachers along the way, classroom teachers, although we prioritized that. It was a minimal reduction to central office staff, six positions lost there, which I can assure you on a daily basis, we feel the impact of that, along with teacher assistants. You recall, and thank goodness, the commissioners came through for us last year to save those teaching assistant positions. I can't say that loudly enough. So here's where we are, one million dollars, and I think you're absolutely correct. There is no one in this room, I have a son that's a teacher, I have a mother that retired after forty-two years of teaching. I would be literally thrown out of the Baldwin family if I was not a staunch supporter of teachers. I want every, and if you were at the work session, you would have pulled your checkbook out of your pocket and paid these teachers. That's how good they are. No one wants a teacher raise and supplements to increase more than Tony Baldwin. But the reality of it is, we're asking for one million dollars, it could have been much, much worse. But that one million dollars, think about it. If that's not provided through local funding, it's not coming from the state, the federal funds are all back in Washington, they're not... They're not coming our way. Think of how many teachers that represents that we lose in this school system with a million dollars. Just think about that. So again, in good conscious, consciousness, I can't, you know, I have a hard time, even though my heart says, I want to see a raise for our teachers, but we have to take care of operating costs for this school system. So that million dollars is a significant point to raise, Mr. Bryant.
Yes, I wanted to mention that, you know, our sister school district, New Hanover County, with the same enrollment numbers, their commissioners are providing sixty-nine million dollars.
If you would also please wait for me to recognize you before you say?
I apologize. I did hear that somebody else wanted, thank you. You know, New Hanover's commissioners are giving their school districts sixty-nine million dollars. We're getting fifty-three million from our commissioners. I don't think we're asking for enough money. We only received forty-three and a half percent of our property tax dollars for education in Buncombe, and that includes AB Tech and both school systems. So my premise is, we didn't meet with the commissioners. We didn't discuss, you know, priorities, like paying academic coaches who coach debate teams or Science Olympiad, pay equity for them, because we are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to our sports coaches. We also didn't address priorities like our gifted program and fully funding it, or funding a foreign language program for our elementary students that wouldn't be that big of a cost. We also haven't discussed raising the teacher supplement. When we've raised the supplement for principals, they're getting extra duty pay. We didn't talk about how we've, are paying almost twelve percent supplement or bonus pay to our non-certified employees, yet our teacher supplement stays the same. Even Haywood County is increasing their teacher supplement by half a percent. We are hoping the state legislature will give that three percent raise to our teachers, and then we do, and I'm glad you included in the budget what we would have to come up with to supplement local teachers who wouldn't qualify for that state raise, because they're paid with local money. Also, our textbooks, you know, I found out the Buncombe County School Foundation is paying for our sixth and seventh grade social studies textbooks. I'm embarrassed that we had to ask an outside, a charitable organization to raise money for our textbooks, that we couldn't ask for the money, not that we have to ask our commissioners. We could get it from our capital outlay budget. Our capital outlay budget is nine million dollars, which is very high. These are monies that fund roofs, re-roofing projects, paving projects, that we couldn't, we're even funding, we're getting ready to approve several hundred thousand dollars for AstroTurf, yet we can't put textbooks in that budget. I know you've put a hundred thousand dollars in there, but I don't think it's really, is it really enough? Do we just have classroom sets in some schools? Do we have aging textbooks that we're not replacing with the updated versions that perhaps don't even match the standard course of study? So I feel like one, another important thing is instructional supplies for the classroom. We're having to go to Ingles. Tools for Schools is what Dr. Baldwin said, would fund our instructional supply needs. You know, why are we asking all these outside groups? We're doing so much fundraising in the schools, our PTOs, trying to raise money for instructional supplies, for iPads, different, you know, things our students need. Paper for the classroom, the things the teachers need. You know, I can't vote for this budget, because we're not asking our commissioners for enough. And I think if we looked at, if they look at some of their operating costs, there's places they can cut if they need to, if they prioritize education. Right now, education is their second priority. Health, the human services is their number one priority. That's where more funding is going. Other counties have made education their number one priority by their county commissioners. They're funding, fully funding it at the highest level. They, even Guilford County is offering, paying fifty-seven percent of the property tax money to their schools. Again, we're only giving forty-three and a half percent of that property tax money to education in Buncombe. I think we need a meeting with our commissioners. We have till May 15. We're down to the wire because of poor planning, perhaps, that we didn't, we didn't even receive this budget until Friday, last Friday evening. Other districts were looking at their budgets back in March proposals, and school board members were actually on their budget committees. I'm not aware that our school board members were officially appointed. If they were, nobody told me. So, you know, these are some of the issues. Did these things come up about instructional supplies? Every year, I feel like we're starving the classroom and the teachers of the things they need to do their job, that money should be focused on teaching and learning, you know, not just on operations. Was there a mention of cutting, you know, asking every department in the operating section, perhaps, to look at cutting their budget by five percent, for example? We had the offer from an efficiency expert to come in, and he said he could probably save us at least two million dollars. Did we consult with any efficiency experts? And I know I've asked probably some rhetorical questions, but these are just some of the issues I feel that haven't been addressed.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just a couple of things. One is a book and a capital expenditure, and we can't, there's two pots of money that has been explained a lot, but there's the capital funds, and then there's the operating books. Baldwin, you're operating most of those things that you mentioned, and by law, you can't cross that line.
But, I'm sorry, Chip Gerong, the General Statute, say that textbooks can be cut.
Quite rude. You've had plenty of opportunity to speak, and no one has interrupted you.
On a state level, we're funded out of one hundred and fifteen school LEAs. We're ranked thirty-four from local funding. We get on a roughly seven point nine, seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-one thousand is spent. This is episode two thousand thirteen, owed students, and we get one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars from local funds, which ranks thirty-fourth out of one hundred and fifteen, so we're well below average, I'm sorry, well above average with that funding. On the state level, we get, we're ranked ninety-six. We receive five thousand two hundred and thirty-three. So looking at just those numbers, it looks like our county commissioners support us well. What we're asking for in this proposal is just to maintain, basically. It's, and even just trying to maintain what we have is a six percent increase over last year's budget. So I just want to bring those two things up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
One thing, one thing that I would like to say is, you know, over the last several years, our funding from the county commissioners has increased, while the state has continued to decrease. And so I'm a little bewildered by the attack on the county commissioners, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I please respond to Mr. Craig's comments?
Yes, Ms. Baldwin. Mr. Chair Roberts rules of orders dictate that those who have not had an opportunity to speak yet have the opportunity to speak first before someone speaks again.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak besides Ms. Baldwin?
I'd like to address the board, Superintendent, and I say this respectfully to Ms. Baldwin's comments, but I want to make sure that we clarify some statements that were made. First, it's very important to understand you have operational funds and you have capital outlay funds, capital funds. Without special legislation, such as the legislation that allowed us to utilize undesigned lottery funds toward technology, without that legislation, the two don't mix. So when we suggest that textbooks can come out of capital funds, or instructional supplies can come out of capital funds, that's not true. I also, just a very brief history of textbooks and instructional supplies, since that appeared to be the focus. We've got a number of principals in the room. We were in this room back in oh eight, oh nine, and we had to make some tough choices. And principals, what did I hear from you? In unison, don't cut personnel. Where do you go? Remind everyone what I said earlier. Almost eighty-five percent of our budget is personnel. What does that leave? Well, somewhere in that fifteen percent, it's your textbooks and instructional supplies. What was one of the first areas, principals, that the state of North Carolina cut? Because that's a, that's a, that's a significant source of our instructional supplies and textbook. Those two areas were cut significantly. What was our reaction? Because there were some local possibilities for those funds, what did we say? They go first, and we'll live with it. And yes, we do have an incredibly caring community that has stepped in and helped us with instructional supplies. And I'm not embarrassed to reach out and ask them. And I don't think that they have any regrets what they've done for this school system, because they understood. Some of us up here may not understand, but they understood the importance of that, because it's better than losing that classroom teacher for their children in the schools. And I also want to, there's been some reference to New Hanover County school system. And again, I'm sure it's an excellent school system, but I think we have to be so cautious in comparing the budgets and the requests to the commissioners in other particular school systems. And I asked our staff to do a little research. A primary request for most systems across this state to their county commissioners, Mr. Belcher, you and Mr. King, I think you know this, has to do with capital funding. Has to do with capital funding, because there's a historical responsibility there. We're very fortunate in that we have a sales tax that is quite unique, like the Golden Goose. We're very fortunate, and I take a chance every time I publicly talk about it. But the reality of that is, for New Hanover, we just had a ten-year facilities needs report, Mr. Fairley provided to this board. And we did a little research on New Hanover, so just think of the comparisons here. We looked at their ten-year facility needs report. Now, ours, over ten years, is eighty-seven million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's a lot of money, Mr. Belcher, so get ready. But if you were in New Hanover, their request is three hundred and ninety million two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Now, again, I'm sure there is a, clearly a need, but also look at the differential. When you start talking about one system's needs going to the commissioners versus another, we just have to be cautious with that. And that's not to say that there aren't, certainly across this state, there's one hundred and fifteen school systems, and I'm sure there are some that do a wonderful job with the budget that we could learn something from, but we have to be cautious in comparing. Look at those numbers. Now, you tell me, if you're a parent out there and children inside your school system, over ten years, and you've got a kindergartner, where would you be more concerned, sitting in Buncombe County schools, knowing those needs? And some of them, we are very fortunate in the type of needs that we put in that ten-year plan, because other systems couldn't even think of that. Artificial turf, we got that tossed out, okay? Once you think about the community benefit of artificial turf and what's that, what that has meant in Buncombe County. How many community organizations, how many parents out there have had your children on our high school stadiums having an opportunity to take advantage of that? There's no, certainly it's not surprising when systems all around us are now looking at artificial turf. And you know who's requesting it? It's not your athletic teams at the schools, it's your communities, because they've realized now the tremendous benefit that they gain from that. So, yes, we've always put our classroom teachers as high priority. We always will. But again, let's be cautious when we start comparing across the state, because we, there are clear, unique differences. And I apologize for taking up so much time.
Ms. Baldwin?
Thank you. Yes, I mean, I have a difficulty, as Mr. Craig said, in maintaining, this budget is maintaining the status quo. As a, if we were a proactive board, we would be asking the state legislature to introduce flexibility in the Article Thirty-nine sales tax funds, that right now, we're receiving about twelve million dollars that can only be spent on debt reduction, which is a good thing, in construction.
Ms. Baldwin, that's a motion that's coming next on the agenda. Can we wait and discuss it at that time?
Okay, I'll continue. Also, Mr. Craig said that we were thirty-fourth in local funding. This is misleading, because many districts in North Carolina, the majority, receive extra funding from the state called low-wealth funding. Buncombe is not eligible for this, because we have a large tax base. We are supposed to be getting more money from our county commissioners to make up for the difference of us not receiving the low-wealth money that counties that don't have a large tax base can get. Now, I am not advocating that we raise taxes. I'm advocating that we look at our priorities for how we're spending the taxes that we have, that we are receiving. Buncombe is the beneficiary of very generous tax dollars from not only the Article Thirty-nine, but the Article Forty-four-two taxes, which is the capital outlay. Recently, we spent two hundred and five thousand dollars on a fire alarm system. When there were comparable systems, we could have purchased for much less money, maybe seventy-five thousand dollars. So I feel like instead of looking for Cadillac products to buy, we could start looking at trying to save money, like most people do in their own home budget. And I was referring to General Statute one fifteen C ninety-eight that mentions that capital outlay budgets can be used for textbook funds. Also, I wanted to look at, I was, Mr. Reinhardt said that I was attacking the county commissioners, and I don't, I didn't intend to be perceived that way, but I was in fact asking why the board, you know, is not asking the commissioners for more money. Obviously, if they don't know of these needs that we have, we didn't meet with them, you know, they can't give us the money if we don't ask for it, is the point. So also, you're right, we can't completely compare New Hanover County schools with Buncombe County schools, because New Hanover is growing, Buncombe County's school enrollment is declining. So, you know, new schools, new facilities are not maybe on our radar screen due to the enrollment decline and the introduction, induction of more competition from charters and voucher programs. So.
Okay. One thing that I will note, a couple of years ago, I looked at some of the figures on the North Carolina Treasurer website, and the majority of the districts that Ms. Baldwin is referring to, who are paying more in local money, have a higher tax rate than Buncombe County. So I think that's an important note. It may have changed in a couple of years, but at that time, that's where that stood. So. All in favor of the budget moving on to the county commissioners? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Why don't we take about a ten-minute break real quick?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frisbee.
Okay. Moving on with the action agenda, we have a motion, intent to purchase communication systems for the Discovery Academy and Administrative Services Building. Do I have a motion to approve?
Assembly?
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Next, we have a motion, and this comes from Ms. Baldwin, to ask the state legislators to increase flexibility in our Article Forty-four-two funds and Article, or Article Thirty-nine, as revenues are projected to increase, so a portion can be spent on teaching and learning. That's a motion from Ms. Baldwin. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Baldwin?
Well, I guess I just, since I made the, have I made the motion yet?
I made it for you.
Okay, thank you.
We're at the discussion part, so.
Okay. Yeah, the reason I proposed this was that we increase flexibility in these restricted funds. Right now, you know, Article Forty-four-two is. Right now, you know, Article 4042 is restricted to capital outlay, and then Article 39 is restricted to the construction or the -- and debt repayment. And we learned at the last work session last Thursday, that revenues are projected to increase in the Article 39 due to changes the legislature made in sales tax laws. So, and as enrollment, again, has dropped in Buncombe, or is projected to be flat or just increase slowly over time. I felt like a portion of it being spent on teaching and learning would be much more important than, you know, new school construction, since we have nearly 27 -- more than 2,700 empty seats, empty desks in our class rooms right now.
Anyone else have a comment? Mr. Bryant?
I would not support this motion for a couple of reasons. Number one, I would argue, and I think it's -- most people out there would probably agree with me, that every nickel that's spent on buildings, desks, computers, et cetera, et cetera, goes to teaching and learning. You don't have some of those things, you don't have any teaching and learning, you don't have roofs over your buildings, you don't have teaching and learning, if you don't have effective HVAC systems, you're not going to have teaching and learning. If you don't have cafeteria equipment, you're not going to -- and that's probably a bad analogy, because of the self-sustaining of that there. The second reason I would not support this motion is, even if this board or future boards refused, had the flexibility, but refused from a front end to use that money in places other than where it's currently designated to go, my fear is that current and/or future legislation from Raleigh could be directed at this system to say, "We're a little short right now, and we -- you've got something there that we think you ought to be able to take some money from that and use it in a program that we're now not going to fund." It also then, to me, passes back to the county commission, because that's where we're going to have to go. We do not have a taxing authority as this board. We can't generate money. We can't -- all we can do is ask. And if we go back to the county commission to have to do some of those kind of things, I just think we have a system that works. I believe that our state constitution is pretty clear, that the funding and implementation of our education system in this state is state responsibility, to be supplemented by local. I just think it's a slippery slope and the wrong road to take to adopt this motion and to ask the state legislature for this, and so I would not support this motion.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're, again, pulling some of the items up from the consent agenda. First is the approval of the 2014 Enrollment and Facility Needs Report that was presented last week at our work session. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move, we approve.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I had a question for Mr. Fairley. Is he present? First, I wanted to thank you so much for the very thorough job you did in expanding the report to include the capacity percentages or utilization rates and the modulators, and I really appreciate that. I was wondering if any of the -- if one of the criteria considered was the in and out migration rates in Buncombe County, people moving in and out of the county. Were those rates taken in consideration in determining future enrollment projections?
No, no, they weren't. Our enrollments, we don't track the individual student. We look at the big-picture numbers, and that's how we've done it, and we don't look at that, no.
What about the, like, future construction? One of the public commenters mentioned the possibility of, I think, an exit on I-26 in the Inca-Candler area. Is that something that's considered? Any -- I mean, if you -- I don't know if you go to DOT and ask them about their plans or...
That particular example, yeah, we've known about that for years. They've approached us, questioning our input on that, so we've known it's coming. But typically, I don't put in the projections, things that are speculative. If there is word that some big development is going to happen, but there's been no official application to planning and zoning or building department, that I keep it in mind, but I don't project it in any way until there's some sort of official, real action, because not everything...
Yeah, once someone has applied to create a subdivision, then that's taken...
That's a different thing.
As you told us last week, you know, in the Robertson District, you mentioned a couple of pretty large tracts of land that are going to be converted, and so, you know, those are taken into account, and was discussed, you know, last week.
And many times, they have multiple phases, but only one phase is permitted at this time, and I take that into account, because many times, the future phases don't happen. So, we keep that in mind for future, check on it the next year, and if it's really coming to fruition, then we factor that in.
Board members, any other board members have a question?
No.
Okay. Ms. Ballen, go ahead.
I didn't know if you look at the new charters that are opening this fall and their enrollment, and I think there possibly may be one in the next year, but that hasn't gone through the final approval. But is there any consideration as to how that will affect our enrollment?
No, because I can't predict what district they're coming from until they're kind of established. Charters don't draw from a specific district, even though they may be located in a particular spot. So, I have no way of predicting, and I can't skew the -- I'd be guessing, basically. It's so crystal ball. Once they're in place, now we can look at perhaps where those kids come, but that is come from very hard information to get from the charter schools at this point.
Does Buncombe County contract out for any studies? I talked to one school district, and they said every three years, they have a company do the -- look at more criteria like that in an out-migration rate of residents and school populations. Is this something we do on a regular basis?
I believe that would be a board decision to be made.
So, we don't do that right now?
I think that you know that.
I'm just clarifying.
Okay. Any other board members? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next, and Mr. Fairley, you may want to stick around. Next on the agenda is the approval of the implementation of the five-years facility plan. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move, we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
This plan was also submitted, and we reviewed it last week in our work session. So, do we have any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
I'm sorry, I didn't speak up quickly enough, but I just wanted to ask why our number-one overcrowded school is North Buncombe -- I'm sorry, it's Weaverville Primary at 139% capacity, with 65 students over capacity and five modulators. We also have a -- North Buncombe has three -- the top three overcrowded schools or unbalanced school populations are in North Buncombe. North Buncombe Middle School has 71 students over their capacity and 10 modulators. Of course, North Buncombe Elementary School has 176 students over capacity and nine modulators, and that one is on the list for a long-term project. So, I was just curious as to why some of the other schools that also are overcrowded, you know, are not on the list, and if they're -- what the plans would be, you know, for those schools.
As we discussed in the facilities report, there's a number of coping mechanisms that our schools use to handle higher-than-capacity membership. And it's my recommendation and discussion with the schools' observations and talking with board members, district board members, who are attuned to their districts, that some schools are better able to handle overcrowding than others. And because we don't have the capability of addressing every single issue immediately, we have to prioritize. And I believe this is the appropriate prioritization, that North Buncombe Elementary has this longstanding issue that they are less able to cope with than Weaverville and North Buncombe Middle School. The board did ask, and asked that question about North Buncombe Middle, and I would agree that it is a concern, middle school students and a number of modulators. So, with the help of our finance department, we looked at doing a construction project at North Buncombe Middle to address that. Those are older modulators in less good shape than the ones at Weaverville that are really in -- still in pretty good shape. So, again, it's a prioritization. And between year six and seven on that plan, we would comfortably be able to address that without putting ourselves in jeopardy and not having some sort of balance in this capital fund, to be able to handle a roof that fails or a major failure. So, it's simply a matter of prioritization.
And speaking of priorities, the Inca Middle School overcrowding is number five on the list, and it only has eight students over capacity and six modulators. So, I just find it curious, you know, that we're -- we have the $25 million on here to build what is a short-term solution, an intermediate school there. And how was it determined that an intermediate school would be the best solution? What other alternatives were looked at? Besides, I know you talked about adding a sixth-grade academy at Inca Middle School, but was ever -- was there ever an option to, you know, we talked about, I tried to make a motion to look at the K through 8 model. I don't know, was that ever looked at for the Inca District? Or, you know, redrawing attendance lines possibly, or having a magnet-type school so that maybe between the Robertson and Inca Districts, people on the line could choose if they wanted to go to Robertson or Inca, since Robertson has so much -- more capacity? They're only at 59% capacity at Valley Springs Middle School.
Well, as you know, Ms. Ballen, we had a work session where we discussed all of these ideas, and so you're asking questions that have already been asked before, they've been addressed. That's the purpose of a work session, is to have those -- that opportunity to ask those questions. And so, you're asking questions that are board decisions, and you know the answers to those questions.
Mr. Reinhardt, to correct you, we were handed this report when we walked in the work session. We didn't have it in advance to study, so there wasn't time to do that.
Which report are you talking about?
The budget work session we just had last Thursday, where we were handed this facility report.
Which document was handed to you?
The facility and needs -- enrollment needs report was handed to us when we got there. The capital outlay budget was given to us in advance. But this is a straw man argument. You're trying to deflect from the fact that we have never had a full discussion on the Inca situation, and whether the real issue is not that the school is not -- it's just, you know, marginally overcrowded, but maybe the issue is that we don't want middle schools that have over 1,000 students. I mean, the board has never talked about their priority. Do we want to say all middle schools in Buncombe County have to be 750 students or less? That's what I'm seeing come out as the real issue here, not the fact that the 5-6, you know, model, we need to reevaluate that. It was 12 years ago when that was started, you know, is it really working? I've seen no justification for it, no data to support that the 5-6 model is a best practice. In fact, most school districts have told me intermediates are short-term solutions. The real longer-term solution, you know, has never been explored.
Okay. Board members, any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the last item on the consent agenda, is the approval to design and finance a new Inca intermediate school. Do we have a motion to do so?
I move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Do we have any discussion, even though I think we've already discussed it?
I have a little start, unless somebody else, you know, would like to go first.
I will, if you want somebody to go in a different order.
Go ahead.
Mr. Fairley, can you, or Ms. Frisby, because, well, she was copied on the memo, just help, I think I understand it, but it helped me to understand, and maybe the public to understand, the difference between the fast-track design, site work, and construction to meet the schedule that we're talking about versus the design, build, and build-delivery, and your experience between the two, and pros and or cons, as you see it. Obviously, there's, I would guess, there's not cons, at least not that you're worried about, or you wouldn't have made this recommendation, but can you discuss those two differences?
Well, nothing's a perfect system, so, you know, folks are put in an adversarial position in many ways. When you construct a building, you -- folks are obviously business people and out to make money and as much as they can on a construction project. And the design-bid-build process that we've used is the traditional delivery method that, in my opinion, creates an adversarial atmosphere on the construction project. You get the low bidder. He's the guy that usually forgot the most to put in the bid. So, he's already losing what he considers to be a profit due to him and doing us a favor by building this building at such a low price. So, a lot of effort in the design-bid-build process goes into -- it's, the contractor is looking for ways to extract more money, do things cheaper, quicker, and therefore, it takes a design team and a facilities director, a lot of effort. You really need to be there...
All the time.
All the time. And it's just not possible. I'm not saying that there are not good contractors, are we? We've had very good contractors, fortunately, here in western North Carolina. But we are getting, because of the economy and the nature of the business, a lot more out-of-town, out-of-state, multi-state contracting companies that see us as a one-shot deal, whereas a local contractor, he's got kids in the system, he has peer pressure. So, I think things have changed in that regard, and the construction manager-at-risk system allows you, the board, to choose your general contractor. They kind of get a guaranteed profit and use -- we get to use their expertise to get the building to be where we want it to be in terms of quality and cost. Now, on bid day, the design-bid-build process will be a lower price. It's that guy that forgot this, that, or the other thing. He's just taken whatever subs gave him the lowest price, and they've forgotten things. But really, that's the lowest price you'll ever get for that project. The construction manager process, the subcontracts are bid, and we get to see them. It's an open-book process. And that's really the highest price that you're going to get for that project, because there will be a project contingency that typically, that construction manager, if he is able to bring the project in, will get to share in that contingency. So, he's got a motivation to deliver this project at a lower price than what the contract price is. So, it's not without its flaws. You do a lot of more work up front, but I believe in our situation here, if we want to open a school in 2000... to open a school in 2016, that there's a much better chance, not a guarantee, that the project will be done on time and within budget. And that's why I'm recommending that we explore this process and use this process.
Kind of piggybacking on that, I know, I believe the county has done several projects...
That's all they do, really, for their larger projects, and the two city schools that are being built are being done the same way.
Okay.
Dean is very familiar with a lot of, a lot of school systems are using it. You know, and until this kind of change in this wave of out-of-town contractors, I would say, "Let's continue." But I think we're going to get the same thing, a lot of kind of out-of-town, out-of-state contractors that use and abuse our subcontractors, our local subcontractors.
Okay.
Thank you for the explanation, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Baldwin?
Thank you. I want to mention some of the things that was brought, that were brought up in public comment. One was the issue of the industrial, the unlined industrial landfill that covers 10 acres right close to the school site, and that landfill was opened in 1929. On that CD that Mr. Rice gave all the board members some time ago, there's a document from the EPA Superfund Branch that describes what's in that landfill, and it talks about the waste types deposited there, which do include the coal ash and construction materials. There was a power plant that the American Inca BASF plant operated there that produced 30 tons of coal ash a day, and that 30 tons a day was put in the landfill for decades. And also, there's contaminants from the process of producing rayon and then nylon at the plant and chemicals like chromium and arsenic from the coal ash. So, and as I said, the landfill's unlined, and issues were brought up about vapor from those products or, you know, the other possibilities of the brownfields and how highly contaminated that site can be as a brownfield. So, I think that's, that's an important issue for the board to consider before making this decision to use that site for the school. Alternatively, some districts will make, like, right now, the consideration is that some of the schools are unbalanced, the elementary schools in the Inca District, their school populations, where you've got Pisgah Elementary that's somewhat overcrowded, and then, I think it's by about 29 students. So, and then you have Hominy Valley, which is only at 77 percent capacity, and some districts will redraw attendance lines just within their, that little Inca District, not little, but within the Inca District to redistribute that school population, or some will make, like, Hominy Valley could become a magnet school so the Inca parents could choose if they wanted their children to go there, if it had a learning model theme, like, it could be a STEM theme, it could be the expeditionary learning model that's used by Evergreen, for example, or the Franklin, in the Franklin School of Innovation. So, I mean, there's lots of other creative ways that won't cost us $25 million of taxpayer And, you know, I'd hope the board that would consider this, that we don't go with the 12-year-old status quo model of the 5-6 school, but we start thinking out of the box and being proactive as far as what is really best for these students, you know? What is the real justification for a 5-6 model? Is there a justification for it? So, these are just some considerations to think about. And again, you know, we have the Franklin School of Innovation, public charter school opening there one mile away from this site, and how will that impact enrollment in the Inca District? And we, it's premature to make this decision without those numbers. I think we already saw something in the newspaper about possibly 300 students have already enrolled or signed up, applied to go to the school. Those are just some of my concerns, and also, I guess, some of the public commenters' concerns.
So, everyone knows that we do have an environmental report that was done before we purchased the property. It's here for anyone that would like to view it. It's also been on our school website since September, September. It's there for anyone that would like to view it. And I'd also like to say that, you know, we have to run this school. There's a possibility that there is, could be a school, charter school opening. There's a possibility it may not be a mile away in our school district. So, if anyone would like to see that information, here it is. So, all right. All in favor of moving forward with the Inca Intermediate School, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Fairley. Several items, including some policies for first reading, and I'm sure I am not missing anything. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor...
Mr. Chair, I know it's unusual. Could I ask Dr. Baldwin a question if he knows? Not, I don't have any problem. I'm just curious, Ms. Rhonda C. Smith.
We have to prove the point of order.
I withdraw the thought.
Okay. All in favor?
Well, you can still ask. Let me see how big is... You think I can get this in my mouth? Apologies, Mr. Chair.
We wouldn't want to prolong the meeting any longer, Pat, okay?
Apologies, Mr. Chair.
All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We've covered the board directive, policies for first reading. All right. Future meetings and announcements, we have a national board-certifies teachers' recognition on May the 8th, which is next Thursday.
It's a week from today.
Week from today, and that is here. It is here. We have, in June, we actually have two meetings. We have the June 5th meeting, and then we have the June 30th meeting that will come up, and we will have no July meeting. So, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Sometimes.[1734.13]